Our next recognition for this evening is for Math Counts. And I believe Amanda Pagean is here to help with the recognition. And we, I'd like to invite any of the students that are part of this group that are being recognized. Matthew's making his way forward. And I would like to share the following. Congratulations to Matthew Chen, seventh grader at Central Middle School, and Amanda Pagean, math teacher at Central Middle School, on advancing to the 2018 Raytheon Math Counts National Competition, May 12th through the 15th in Washington DC. Matthew was one of 224 mathletes from across the country and one of four from Minnesota to compete in the national competition. Amanda coached the Minnesota team. Math Counts allows sixth through eighth grade students to compete in competitions designed to test speed, accuracy, reasoning, and collaboration. More than 250,000 students across the country participate in Math Counts competitions with the top four students and top coach from each state advancing to the nationals. At this time, I'll turn the mic over to Amanda.
Thank you.
Just to make a few comments.
Yeah. Thank you for this recognition. I just wanted to say it was super fun to coach the Minnesota team and Matthew in particular. He not only is a really strong math student, but has a great sense of humor, is very respectful, which helps when we're, you know, walking around DC for four days. So, thanks, Matthew. I think that's it. Thank you.
And our next recognition this evening is for our Scholars of Distinction. And I know a number of our recipients are here with us tonight. I was anticipating that we'd have a couple of staff who would be here to read the names and help with this recognition, but I'm not seeing that they've arrived. So, I'm going to demonstrate a lesson on winging it and doing my very best. So, at this time, I would like to invite any of our students that are here tonight to be recognized as a scholar of distinction to please come and assemble here to my left by our school board chair. Well, first of all, congratulations. This is so wonderful and just a great testimonial to the hard work and dedication that our students bring forth. This really is an incredible recognition and award. What I'd like to do is to share a little bit about what the Scholars of Distinction program is, and then announce the names and share a little bit about the work that they had done as part of this project. First of all, congratulations to the 20 students from Wayzata High School who were among the 53 students honored statewide as Minnesota Department of Education Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics Scholars of Distinction. Mathematics Scholars of Distinction, Social Studies Scholars of Distinction, and Science Scholars of Distinction. The Minnesota Department of Education recognizes the distinguished achievements of students who have completed required work in the Minnesota academic standards, demonstrate mastery of complex subject matter, and apply their knowledge to challenging projects. So, I'm going to read your name. I think I'm going to limit that to first names. And if you would step forward when I read your name, and then I'll share the little bit of a bio that is included here with you. First, Annika. Not here. She received STEM meritorious performance, and her project was effects of configurational entropy on population-free energies for growing polymer chains. I might have better luck reading all of the names than I would the scientific projects, but it's wonderful. Ria. Social Studies, meritorious performance, economics project, racial profiling, and airport security. Congratulations, Ria. In STEM, meritorious performance, and the project optimization of laser nano-warming in phantom droplets. Step forward. Thank you. You have to follow the rules.[316.13][316.13](laughter) Social Studies Scholar of Distinction, Applied Geography Project, impacts of climate change on the flow of the Brahmaputra?
Brahmaputra.
Brahmaputra River from 1986 to 2017. And Scholars of Distinction, Project Impacts of Climate Change on the Flow of the Same River Mentioned Before from 1986 to 2017. Congratulations. Next is Peal. Not here. STEM Scholars of Distinction, Project Silk-Based Bio-compatible Nano Sensor Platform. Jatri. Not here. Science, meritorious performance, and the project was the utility of Bortz-Zamib in children and young adults with acute lymphoblastic leukemia. Not here. Social Studies, meritorious performance, Applied History Project, The Growth of Paris 250 B.C. Through Today: Social, Economic, and Political Factors. Anish. Social Studies, meritorious performance, Applied History Project, Executive Traditions of Peacemaking: The 1987 U.S.-Soviet Intermediate Nuclear Forces Treaty, Its Forerunners and Its Aftermath. Neil. Science, meritorious performance, Project Effects of CRABP-1 on the Metabolism of Mice Models, and Leadership, meritorious performance, The Project Effects of Teaching and Evaluation Methods and Systems on Overall Personality Development: A Comparative Study Between High Schools of Rural West Bengal, India, and Suburban USA. Akash. Science Scholars of Distinction, The Project Evaluation of Critical Polymer Concentration and the Presence of Drug as a Solvent. Devika. Not here. STEM Scholars of Distinction, Project Understanding the Effects of Insulin on Amyloid Beta-Fibril Formation in Alzheimer's Patients. And Science Scholars of Distinction, The Project Understanding the Effects of Insulin and Amyloid Beta-Fibril Formation. Oh, that's on there twice. Well, we read it twice. Or say, two awards, same project. Thank you. Rahundanan?
(inaudible).
I'm sorry.[486.03][486.03](laughter) STEM Scholars of Distinction, Project Validating Material Properties of Devices Used to Treat Early Onset Scoliosis with Finite Element Analysis. Nimrata. STEM, meritorious performance, Project Assistive Artificial Intelligence for Coping with Memory Loss. Matthew. Science, meritorious performance, Project Characterization of the Extracellular Matrix During iPSC Differentiation into Cardiomyocytes. Good thing I majored in biology. I can get some of these right. Ananya. Science Scholars of Distinction, Her Project Generation of GST-PELP-1 Expression Constructs for Social Studies. Congratulations. Ruhi. Science, meritorious performance, Project Overexpression of MASH4 in MyOD for Increased Satellite Cell Number. Abharaj. Science, meritorious performance, The Project Identification of Novel Resistance Mechanisms to Pyrazinoid Acid in Mycobacterium Smigmatis and Other Insights into the Precise Mechanism of Pyrazinamide Action. Wow, there's a sentence. Sidney. Science, meritorious performance, Her Project Analysis of Changes in Heat Propagation Due to Verifying Specific Heat and Thermal Conductivity. Andrea. Science, meritorious performance, The Project Assessment of Side Population Contribution to Myofiber Types. Anne Frank. Mathematics Scholars of Distinction, Project Design and Prototype of Helical Miura Origami. Wow. And the wind is blowing out of recognition of your wonderful accomplishments. Congratulations. I hope I didn't miss anybody. Did I get everybody that's here? Wonderful. Could you join me in a round of applause?[633.66][633.66](applause) I think it's safe to say with those studying at this age, at this level, the world's in good hands, and we have much to be optimistic about. So, thank you so much for all of your dedicated efforts to work on those wonderful projects. And I'm so glad that on a relatively stormy night, you and your families could come and join us for a little bit tonight. We're going to grab a photo over here, so don't run off. And if you want to wait till this passes over a little bit, feel free. But after our recognitions, oftentimes those being recognized and their families can feel free to make a graceful exit, but that will be up to you, or you can congregate here in the lobby as well. So, again, congratulations. We'll get a photo here. Again, thank you for being here this evening, and students, keep up the great work. Very, very impressive. Have a nice evening. Thanks so much.
It's safe out there in the wind.
(laughing) I know.
(inaudible) my jacket. I'm just...
It is clearing out.
No, it's fine.
So fun to see so many students and families coming, even though summer vacation has officially begun. Thank you so much. Maybe the wind will die down a minute to get out. So typically, the next item on our agenda would be a student curriculum presentation, but Dr. Johnson, all your teachers and principals are on summer vacation, right? So, we will once again look forward to resuming our student curriculum presentations in September as well, for those of you that are watching at home and keeping track of the order of our meetings. And that leads us to superintendent reports and recommendations. And Mr. Westrom, under Finance and Business Services, I think you have a couple.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Anderson, I have seven items this evening. The first item is our monthly financial reports. Enclosed in your board packets for your review and information are the following financial reports as of April 2018. The Student Activity Fund Report, the Investment Summary Report, an analysis of financial reports, a statement of revenues, and a statement of expenditures. And as you know, we have a board committee, the finance committee, where we look at this information in great detail. And at this point, we're on track with our budget versus actual projections, and there are no unusual or unexpected items within the financial matters through the month of April and actually through the month of May as well, so.
Okay, great.
So, I'd be happy to take any questions, if there are any. No action is required.
Okay. Board colleagues, any questions about our monthly financial reports? It looks like it. All right. Thank you so much.
Okay. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Anderson, the next item is to approve the preliminary 2018-2019 budget. And the following is the summary of the budget for 2018-2019 in total. We are looking at a total expenditure budget of revenues of 190, or a total revenue budget of $194,295,734 in our revenues. And that's broken among five funds: the general fund, the food service fund, the community service fund, the building construction fund, and the debt service fund. And our expenditures are at $223,017,568. You're probably aware that the budget planning process begins in December with the approval of the preliminary, or the final property tax levy. And then throughout the year, we have a budget calendar that we follow very closely, and the board has been kept in great, has been kept up to speed in great detail on a number of the items within the budget. And so, at this point, the recommended action is to approve the preliminary budget for fiscal year 2018-2019.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Westrom. Board colleagues, our recommended action is to approve the preliminary budget for fiscal year 2018-2019. Is there a motion to that effect?
So, moved.
Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Now, let's have some discussion. Questions? Mr. Brown.
Mr. Westrom, thanks for putting this together, and thank you to your team. I was wondering if you might touch a little bit on the timing of the construction fund and how the debt service, the debt service fund works with that, just to better tell our constituents how that might reflect here.
Yes, thank you. I think within our budget, you'll notice that we are deficit spending, and we're deficit spending in the construction fund. The reason why we're deficit spending in the construction fund is in school district fund accounting, we actually sold the voter-approved bonds this year, so we received $70 million worth of bond proceeds. Those are recorded in this year, but those projects will take place over the next five years. So, you will see that the revenue has been received in one year, and the expenditures will be expended over a five-year period. So, the primary reason why you see a deficit within the budget that we just presented to you, and a deficit is where expenditures exceed revenues, is due to the fact that we'll be building a new elementary school, looking at media centers, and other construction projects throughout the district. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. I may make one more comment, too. Just another remark that I probably should have made earlier, but you're probably aware that the Wayzata School District is experiencing significant enrollment growth. We are projecting 294 more students, and we're expecting our enrollment growth to grow to over 12,000 students. In each of the next several years, we're anticipating about a 2.5% increase in the number of students that will be served by the district. And many of our formulas that generate the revenue that we receive from the state are generated based on the number of pupils that are served. So, the laws that were passed in 2017 form the basis of the revenue projections that are included in this budget. We were hopeful that there may have been additional resources available for the school district for safety and security, and as well as for some of the other needs of the district. But the legislature did not provide any additional funds other than competitive grants that we can potentially apply for to provide additional infrastructure improvements to ensure the safety and security of our students. So, thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you for that clarification.
Quick question. So, when can we apply for those, and do you have projects that would qualify? And are you planning to apply for any of those?
At this point, the Department of Education hasn't given guidance on how to apply for those. It's a $25 million statewide appropriation. Maximum amount per building is $500,000, but we are constantly looking for ways to improve and enhance the safety and security of our students. One of the things that we are giving consideration to is the safety and security of our buildings in the after-school hours. So, we do already, we have already begun that brainstorming process, and we'll seek some type of financial award to ensure that our buildings are safe and secure after school.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. McCullough.
Thanks, Mr. Westrom, and thanks to your team. Can you just explain a little bit about the unassigned fund balance and how that, how that is in the context of our fund balance policy?
Yes, Mr. McCullough, members of the board. The school district has a number of different categorical classifications within our general fund. You're probably aware that the general fund accounts for all items other than those required to be accounted for in another fund, which would be construction, debt service, community education, and food service. So, those items are not included in the general fund. But within the general fund, we account for our technology levy. We account for our facilities and deferred maintenance. We also account for our transportation. So, those items are considered general portions of the general fund, but we also have some assigned components that are required to be expended in a certain manner by state statutes. For instance, 2% of the revenue that we receive is required to be spent specifically on staff development activities. A portion of the revenue that we receive is required to provide safe and secure schools. So, within our general fund balance, so we do have a line item called our unassigned fund balance, and we have a board policy that we want to keep that unassigned fund balance at a minimum of 5% to 7%. And the reason why we want to do that is that serves to be a cushion so that we can meet our operating expenses. It represents about four to six weeks of operations, and it really is a prudent and best practices to have that little cushion. It's been several years since the state has actually shut down, but if the state were to shut down, we're dependent, highly dependent on the revenue that we receive from the state. And so, that would allow us to continue our operations for a certain amount of time, four to six weeks. So, thank you.
Good. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Westrom. I, too, would just like to underscore the work of the board finance committee and also our citizens finance advisory council, both of which have been actively engaged with you and within this budgeting process. So, thank you as well to our CFAC members who have weighed in and asked some great questions regarding the budget. Okay. Are there any other questions regarding our recommended action, which is to approve the preliminary budget for fiscal year 2018-2019? Hearing no additional discussion, we'll call for a vote. All in favor of approving the recommended action, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Abstentions? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Anderson, the next item is to approve a revised budget for 2017-18. The revenue adjustments included in this revised budget include actual receipts year-to-date for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2018, and the reclassification of technology levy activity. The expenditures reflect the adjustments and updated information for leases, construction, and technology levy expenditures. The technology levy activity was reclassified on a statewide basis, so it's not just the Wayzata School District that's asking to have this reclassified, but other districts as well, in order to comply with the new accounting and reporting requirements by the Minnesota Department of Education. So, we're really not asking for additional resources. We came in within the budget parameters, but we're simply doing a fair amount of reclassification so that our expenditures and revenues are comparable on a statewide basis with our neighboring districts. So, within this action, we're asking the board to approve a revised revenue budget of $258,688,815, and a revised expenditure budget of $197,496,125. And to make additional remarks, as Mr. Brown had alluded to, you'll notice in the building construction fund, we're, our revenues are 70 million, or over $70 million, but our expenditures are slightly under 20 million, and that's because those projects will be expended and constructed over a five-year period. So, with that, the recommended action is to approve the revised budget for fiscal year 2017-18.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Westrom. Once again, the recommended action is before you, is to approve the revised budget for fiscal year 2017 and 2018. Is there a motion to that effect?
So, moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Brown.
I just might mention that we did discuss this in detail at our finance committee meeting, and this is just a reclassification and not a true change in budget parameters. So, thank you.
That is correct.
Great. Another discussion. Okay, the recommended action is on the table. Hearing no more discussion, all in favor of the approval of the revised budget for fiscal year 1718, say aye. Aye. Opposed? No? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Anderson, our next item is in anticipation of the 2018, no, 2019-20 budget. So, every year, districts are required to certify the population estimate, and then that actually will be submitted to the Department of Education during the month of July, and then that will allow us to continue receiving revenue on behalf of the community education. So, pursuant to Minnesota Statute 275.14, a school district may submit an update of its resident population estimate to the state demographer for approval. The population estimate update must be adopted by a board resolution by July 1st, submitted to the state demographer by no later than July 15th, 2018, and if approved by the state demographer, the district's population estimate will be used in calculating its community education revenue in the subsequent year. So, the recommended action is to approve the population estimate of 68,217 residents within the footprint of the Wayzata Public Schools as of June 30th, 2018. And I would just like to make one additional comment, that this is an increase of 1,700 students, or 1,700 residents. It includes birth through entire life in all of our district, and you're aware that the district's been growing rapidly, so.
All right.
So, with that, the recommended action is before you, and it would require a resolution.
All right. So, the recommended action is before us. It's to approve the resolution, which assigns the population estimate of 68,217 residents within the footprint of the Wayzata Public Schools as of June 30th, 2018. Is there a motion to that effect?
I will move with the request that we waive the reading of the resolution.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, and we are waiving the reading of the resolution. Is there any discussion? No discussion. Well, I just have a question. 17,000 residents as an increase, right?
1,700, I'm sorry.
1,700. I might have written it down at 1,700. Wow. Have we ever, do you know, and this might be a two, a hard question, but have we ever had a time where we've had an increase of that many residents?
I think that is the record increase in the 10-year period that I've been here.
Okay.
It may have occurred maybe 15, 20 years ago. At that time, the district was growing quite rapidly, too, but we're at 68,217 residents overall, so that is clearly the highest number of residents that the Wayzata district has had.
Wow. Wow, we are growing. We are fortunate to be, to have so many people who would like to be a part of our district. Okay, any other discussion? No. Okay, the recommended action is before you. It's to approve the population estimate of 68,217 residents within the footprint of the Wayzata Public Schools as of June 30th, 2018. It's a resolution, so there's a roll call.
Yes. Linda Cohen is absent. Andrea Keen, absent. Bonita Lucky?
Yes.
Chris McCullough?
Yes.
Cheryl Palzine, yes. Eric Brown?
Yes.
And Sherjo Hansen?
Yes.
Okay. There you go.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Anderson, the next two items are also in preparation of the 2019-2020 school year. On an annual basis, local school districts are required to approve a 10-year long-term facility maintenance capital expenditure plan. And maybe just a couple remarks. You're probably aware that this district is very... And maybe just a couple remarks, you're probably aware that this district is very, very forward-thinking in its maintenance and planning for facilities. So we have a committee, a facility committee of the board, that does a deep study of our facilities, our needs, our projections, as well as maintaining the investment that our community has already made in the existing infrastructure. We have just under 2 million square feet of facilities within the district. So first I'll ask the board to approve the Wayzata two-year and ten-year plan, and then I'll ask the board to approve the 287, intermediate district 287, long-term facility plan as well. So the 2015 legislative session established a long-term facility maintenance revenue program for school districts, and this program replaces some subcomponents, including the health and safety revenue, deferred maintenance revenue, and alternative facilities bonding and levy programs, beginning in fiscal year 2017. Annually, the district and the school board must have a 10-year capital plan that's been adopted by the school board. So the recommended action for the Wayzata's plan is to approve the long-term facility maintenance revenue program plan for fiscal years 2019 through 2028 and the district's two and 10-year facility plans.
All right. Thank you. Board colleagues, the supporting information and recommended action is before you. This is also a resolution, and it is to approve the long-term facilities maintenance revenue program plan for fiscal years 2019 to 2028 and the district's two and 10-year facilities plans. Is there a motion to that effect?
I would move and also request that we waive the reading of the resolution, please.
Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I just, I would like to make a comment about the administration and the team that works on facilities and all of the projects. They work so hard, and they do such a good job of working in the long-term facilities maintenance projects, along with our capital projects, with our bond and all of our building that's going on. They are amazing at putting the projects together to try and use efficiencies where we can and save money and to disrupt our schools as little as possible. So John and Brad and your whole team do a fabulous job, and I just want to have a shout out to them for working so hard with so many balls in the air. They do a fantastic job, so thank you for that.
Thank you. I'll make sure I share that, those remarks with the team. And just another note, that we only have two and a half months to do a significant amount of facility improvements, and that many of our buildings are heavily used during the school or during the summertime. You're probably aware that summer school started at the middle level and at the high school today. So we work around that, and once again, we want to be prudent stewards of the taxpayers' investment in our facilities. And I think anybody who tour our facilities would echo what you just mentioned, Cheryl, that we have a team that does a really good job. And the finance, or the facility committee of the board, that meets regularly on a monthly basis, also advises the administration very well. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you. I too wanted to echo the thanks to you, Mr. Westrom, and John and the team, facilities team, but also to Ms. Polzin as chair of the board facilities committee, and the direction that you give to all of us in the governance standpoint. So, thanks so much. Okay, the resolution is before us, and hearing no more discussion. The recommended action is to approve the long-term facilities maintenance revenue program plan for fiscal years 2019 to 2028 and the district's two and 10-year facilities plans. I think it's a roll call.
Yes. Andrea Keen, absent. Bonita Lucky?
Yes.
Chris McCullough?
Yes.
Cheryl Polzin, yes. Eric Brown?
Yes.
Linda Cohen, absent. And Chair Johansson?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Westrom, you're on a roll.
Yes, so the next item is to approve District 287's long-term maintenance revenue plan for fiscal year 2019-28. You probably noticed that their days are, or their 10-year plan is slightly different than the Wayzata district's plan, and that part of that is because intermediate district levies for, or actually has a plan that it allocates to all its member districts, and several of those districts actually began the levying process a year in advance. So we have a different set of dates there, but we're asking the board to approve District 287's long-term facility maintenance capital expenditure plan for fiscal years 2019 through 28, and affirm Wayzata Public Schools fiscal year 2018-19 portion. And maybe I'll make another quick comment. The superintendent attends 287 meetings, the business managers attend 287 meetings, and then I think we have other key staff, such as Dr. Johnson, who works closely with 287, and we've reviewed this in great detail, and we, all member districts, recommend that this somehow be approved. So if that gives you additional information, that would be useful as you make your consideration.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Westrom. So this too is a resolution, and the recommended action is to approve District 287's long-term facilities maintenance capital expenditure plan for fiscal years 2019 to 2028 and affirm Wayzata Public Schools fiscal year 2018 to 2019 portion. Is there a motion to that effect?
I will again move that with the request that we waive the reading of the resolution, please.
Second. All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Just have one question for Mr. Westrom. So with respect to the allocation of responsibility, if you will, for the finances for 287?
Mm-hmm.
I see in the board packet that ours is a little over 12%. How is that determined? Is it a function of the number of students we have enrolled at 287, or is there something more, I guess, elaborate than that?
Yep, actually, it's slightly more complex, but it closely is allocated, or there's a direct correlation between the number of students that reside within the Wayzata district that attend a 287 program. Within our enrollment, we have about 97 students that are placed in a 287 program, so we think the best way to allocate is based on utilization. So that is the primary driver of allocating those different components to the member districts.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. No discussion. I would like to thank the administration for your review of this and your work, and in addition to the people that you mentioned, Mr. Westrom, that are active with District 287. I know that Andrea Keen, who is traveling right now, is the Wayzata board rep for 287. She is active on that board and looks very closely at all that comes forward. So thank you too, to Andrea, for representing Wayzata well in that group. Okay, so the motion before us is to approve District 287's long-term facilities maintenance capital expenditure plan for fiscal years 2019 to 2028 and affirm Wayzata Public Schools fiscal year 2018-2019 portion, and it's a roll call vote.
Bonita Lucky?
Yes.
Chris McCullough?
Yes.
Cheryl Polzin, yes. Eric Brown?
Yes.
Linda Cohen, absent. Andrea Keen, absent. And Chair Johansson?
Yes.
Passes. And last but not least, Mr. Westrom, right?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Anderson. You'll probably recall that within our budget, we do have a reserve for the acquisition of land. It is the district's practice to make sure that the district and future boards have land available for constructing new facilities, and so this next item is a resolution authorizing the superintendent and/or the executive director of finance and business services to execute a purchase agreement for the purchase of land. The district currently does not presently have in its position land to construct a new education facility, because we broke ground today on the land that we did have, and we have identified a number of potential properties that could serve a public purpose in the future. So the district administration is reviewing land options and negotiated terms with its legal counsel at this point, and the administration recommends that the school board appoint Chase P. Anderson, superintendent, and/or James R. Westrom, executive director of finance and business services, as an authorized signer for all purchase agreements and other related documents related to the purchase of land, and directs either of them to execute the purchase of a property to construct a new facility. And I would just like to make a remark, that you authorize us to enter into a purchase agreement based on the information and the parameters that you gave us in a closed session. So we're in the negotiations process, so that's private data until we actually do enter into a purchase agreement, and then Dr. Anderson or myself will sign the purchase agreement with our legal counsel's guidance, and then the board will need to affirm and approve the purchase agreement before it becomes binding. So the recommended action is to approve the resolution authorizing the superintendent and/or executive director of finance and business services to execute a purchase agreement for the purchase of land.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Westrom. Once again, this is a resolution, and I will repeat again, as I call for a motion, to approve the resolution authorizing the superintendent and/or executive director of finance and business services to execute a purchase agreement for the purchase of land. Is there a motion to that effect?
I will move and request that we waive the reading of the resolution, please.
Second.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Polzin. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Brown?
Just might make a couple comments. This is in no way a new imminent building on the forefront, just so I can make sure that our constituents understand that. It's been a long practice of the administration, and with the recommendation of CFAC, our citizens' financial advisory council, to continue to look forward and make sure that we have land for future needs. So this is being very proactive, and thank you to Dr. Anderson and Mr. Westrom for continuing that approach.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Yes, then it's important to note that we are not building another one, but we are following tradition and a practice of the district that has set us up very well. And I will just make one correction too, for the record. We didn't actually get to break the ground today. It was a little rainy and a little mucky, and we might still be stuck in the muck if we were there in the rainstorm. So that is, that, stay tuned, that should be coming up in the next, I hear we have to do it in the next 10 days. So it's coming, and we look forward to that. So, okay, any other comments or questions or discussion? Okay, so once again, the recommended action is to approve the resolution authorizing the superintendent and/or executive director of finance and business services to execute a purchase agreement for the purchase of land. It's a resolution, so we'll have a roll call.
All right. Chris McCullough?
Yes.
Cheryl Polzin, yes. Eric Brown?
Yes.
Linda Cohen, absent. Andrea Keen, absent. Bonita Lucky?
Yes.
And Chair Johansson?
Yes.
Passes. Okay, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Westrom. You have been busy. No summer vacation for you, I don't think.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, and speaking of busy, next on our agenda are a number of human resources recommendations. And Ms. Voss, I think you've been a little busy as well.
Yes, I have been, but with all good things. So, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Superintendent Anderson. The first agenda item that I have this evening is to share with you the recommendations for supplemental salaries for the 2018-2019 school year. As you can see, with our reserved teachers and classified staff substitute pay guidelines, we are recommending no changes for the coming school year. For the technology department, with our casual employees, we're looking at increasing our high school minimum wage by 12 cents. Our activity fund rates are remaining consistent, really no changes from last year, and we're looking at a 2% pay increase for our community education services hourly rates and our early learning school peppermint fence program. Our home-based site managers, we are recommending a 2.25% increase, a 1% pay schedule adjustment, and a compression of the current 18-year schedule to a 12-year schedule, and the addition of one schedule step for the 2018-2019 school year. With that, like I said, we are looking for your approval of those recommended supplemental salaries.
Okay, thank you. Colleagues, the recommended action before you is to approve the 2018-2019 supplemental salaries as detailed and recommended by Ms. Voss. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second. All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? I would like to just underscore that this conversation too, just as we have a finance committee of the board and a facilities committee of the board, we also have a human resources committee of the board, and so each of these moves is not without some discussion from the board level at the committee level. And thank you, Ms. Voss, for keeping us in the loop and continuing to show us and talk to us about the work that you're doing with finance to make sure that this is all possible and within budget parameters, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you for that. No discussion? Okay, the recommended action is to approve the 2018-2019 supplemental salaries as recommended. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Abstention? Motion carries.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Anderson. Next on the agenda is the approval of the unaffiliated salary schedule for 2018-2019. You have had the opportunity to review the costi model and the summary of language changes for the unaffiliated staff, levels 1 through 9, and our technology staff. This recommendation includes a salary schedule improvement of 2.25% for the 2018-2019 fiscal year. This recommendation is within the district's budget parameters, and the human resources board committee has reviewed the recommended changes. The biggest change in the handbook for the coming year will be in the sunsetting of severance language. We are working to define specific contributions in our benefits area so that we can work to control our budget and really make sure that our, that we are rewarding our active employees as we move forward. So our recommended action is that you approve the 2018-2019 salary schedule and handbooks for the unaffiliated positions.
All right. Thank you. Board colleagues, once again, the recommended action before you is to approve the 2018-2019 salary schedule and handbooks for the unaffiliated positions as recommended. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
A second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Oh, I, I've always, I would just like to say thank you. It's very clear in this process and as we move forward, the relationship that our district has between finance and human resources and teaching and learning, and we really look at what do we need to do to make happen so that our teachers can be happy and our staff can be happy in their positions, and we can still stay within the budget, and everyone feels good about how we're moving forward, both when they're here and after they are gone. And so that kind of collaboration is not always easy, and it's not always quick, but thank you to our entire administration and leadership from Dr. Anderson for putting the time and energy and effort into working as a true team to do what's best for our employees, which is ultimately then what's best for our students. Okay, so the recommended action is before you, colleagues. All in favor of approving the salary schedule and handbooks for the unaffiliated positions as recommended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Abstention? Motion carries.
Next agenda item for this evening, I have another contract for you to consider. I would like to recommend action on the contract with the Wayzata principal personnel for fiscal years 2018 through 2020. The school board's bargaining team and the Wayzata principal representatives reached a tentative contract agreement on May 18. Subsequently, the Wayzata principals voted on May 25 to ratify the contract. Attached is a summary of the proposed two-year contract and the costi model. Both the union and the board placed a high value on meeting the needs of our teachers, parents, students, and community while simultaneously creating a collaborative work environment. We work diligently to maintain a positive balance between remaining competitive while meeting the budgetary needs of the district. We are extremely appreciative of the leadership displayed by the principals as we work to sunset and modify severance language. The negotiation team members were Paul Patzel, Scott Gangler, Karen Kefler, and Jim Bollum for the principals, and Andrea Keen was the board member representative for the district. I would like to express my appreciation for the collaborative efforts put forth by the negotiation team members throughout this process. It was truly a collaborative effort that maintained the spirit and the vision of the district. So it would be my recommended action to approve the contract with the Wayzata Principal Association.
All right. Thank you. Board colleagues, the recommended action before you is to approve the contract with the Wayzata Principal Association for the period of July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2020, as agreed upon by the bargaining teams and ratified by the Wayzata Principal Bargaining Unit. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Any discussion? I just, I'm actually passing along, this isn't me this time, I'm passing along a note from Ms. Keen, who was unable to be here tonight, and she really just wanted to point out how truly respectful and professional this negotiation process is. And she said that there are a couple, you know, that there were just multiple times where it was really a remarkable process that took a lot of work, and that both the principals and Ms. Voss and the administration really were committed to moving that forward. So, thank you from Andrea, who is not with us, and thank you from the board. Okay, board colleagues, the recommended action is to approve the contract with the Wayzata Principal Association for the period of July 1st, 2018, through June 30th, 2020, as agreed upon by the bargaining teams and ratified by the Wayzata Principal Bargaining Unit. All in favor of approving the recommended action, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Very good, one more to go. Last one that we have for you this evening is board action on the contract with Wayzata secretary and paraprofessional personnel for fiscal years 2018-2021. As you will notice, we're extending their contract into three years versus two. The school board's bargaining team and the Wayzata secretary and paraprofessional representatives reached a tentative contract agreement on May 2nd. Subsequently, the Wayzata secretary and paraprofessional personnel, school services employees local 284, voted on May 24th to ratify the contract. You have had the opportunity to review the summary of the proposed three-year contract and the costi model. Both the union and the board placed a high value on meeting the needs of our secretaries and paraprofessionals while working to create a collaborative relationship to enhance our work environment. One of the things that really impressed me about this process was the collaborative efforts that both sides took in order to engage in dialogue versus just more traditional back-and-forth negotiations. I think it was a wonderful opportunity to really get to understand the needs of both sides, and I really appreciated the leadership that that team showed because they were the first ones to move forward with all of the severance language, and they did it very, very well. They asked really good questions, and I really felt that by going through that process with them, there's a really good understanding as to why we needed to accomplish that goal, this round of negotiations. The negotiation team members were Ann Vipes, Cheryl Wurzutka, Danine Osgard, Diane Robinson, Donna Rel, Karen Neese, Kathy Beatty, Linda Levine, Mary Johnson, Marie Beck, and Jeff Lays, and of course, the district board member representative, Chris McCullough. I have to say that every board member that I had the opportunity to negotiate with did an excellent job, and that your presence at those negotiation sessions are really appreciated by both sides because you bring a different perspective, and the value that you place and show and demonstrate to our negotiations teams is really impactful. So, I really appreciate that from all of you. I would like, again, to just express my appreciation for the collaborative efforts put forth by everyone that participated. Negotiations by its very nature is not very collaborative, it's somewhat contentious, and I'm very happy that I was able to, that we were able to very successfully put together some good contracts for the two bargaining units that I shared with you this evening and put in place a good employee agreement that will serve us well for the next three years. So, thank you. The recommendation, of course, is to approve the contract with Wayzata School Services Local 284, our secretaries and paraprofessional personnel. All right, thank you. Board colleagues, the recommended action before you, as stated by Ms. Voss, is to approve the contract with the Wayzata School Services Local 284, secretarial and paraprofessional personnel for the period of July 1st, 2018, through June 30th, 2021, as agreed upon by the bargaining teams and ratified by the Wayzata secretary and paraprofessional bargaining unit. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Ms. Lucky?
Just a question. Why extend for three years instead of two years? Any specific rationale?
I think the rationale behind it is when you have a very solid contract, it's really not necessary to negotiate every two years, and we can maybe even extend it further, but then it gets harder for budgeting purposes. And there are state statutes that put some guidelines around how long you can go in-between contracts, and with our non-licensed groups, like the custodians, the para secretaries, our culinary express, we are allowed to extend the contract for three years. So, we're going to give it a try and see how it works, but I'm optimistic. It kind of then extends that period of when you put together a good contract, that goodwill that you have, and when, like I said, when we all work together every day, it is hard sometimes to go through that negotiation process. So, I think that extra year is probably a good thing.
Thank you. Mr. McCullough?
Yeah, I would just like to extend my thanks to Stacy and to Jim for all of the work that went into this particular negotiation, and a huge amount of thanks goes out to the negotiations team. I have never negotiated the secretaries and paras contract before. This was a new experience for me, and I've done a lot of the other bargaining units, and the wealth of experience and the willingness to share those experiences was really what made a big difference, I think, in this particular contract. And it's important, I think, for people to know that of the 10 members of the negotiating team, they all represent a very diverse group of constituents, for lack of a better word. And so, for them to wear different hats to represent who they represent, but at the same time seek to collaborate to find one solution was really, really impressive. So, I thought it was a great experience. At the risk of sounding silly, I thought it was actually fun, except for maybe the last night, which went on for a while. But it was a great experience, so thank you to Stacy and Jim and the larger negotiations team.
Thank you to you, Mr. McCullough, for representing the board in that work. Any other questions or discussions? Okay, board colleagues, recommended action before you is to approve the contract with the Wayzata School Services Local 284, secretarial and paraprofessional personnel for the period of July 1st, 2018, through June 30th, 2021, as agreed upon by the bargaining teams and ratified by the Wayzata secretary and paraprofessional bargaining unit. All in favor of approving the recommended action, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Thank you so much, Ms. Voss. We have a few new contracts. Fantastic. All right, and that concludes our superintendents' reports. And we'll move on to, I don't think we have any other board action unless someone has something to bring. How about board reports? All right, Ms. Lucky?
Okay, I am really super excited to share a few highlights on committee that I'm a part of, and the one that I wanted to highlight was the superintendent performance evaluation committee. I have a whole lot of passion in this area, especially when we are thinking about our district and we're thinking about the performance of individuals. So, I'm just going to read some of the highlights that I want to share with the community as well as my board colleagues. Performance appraisals represent an opportunity to review the superintendent's work product, attitude, and goal-meeting capabilities. It's important to fully evaluate both the positive aspects and any areas of opportunities of an individual's performance. The evaluations are a communication process that are goal-based, measurable, ongoing, and collaborative, that are all tied to our strategic roadmap. Also, it helps align professional development activities to the performance goal. We've had a wonderful opportunity to do a mid-year review. I appreciate the district and the collaborative efforts of all of us because we are able to provide feedback ongoing, which is extremely important in any type of situation where you're looking at performance and you are, want to improve ongoing. So, the, I'm looking forward to the year-end evaluation. Work session is scheduled July 26, and the evaluation feedback dinner is scheduled for August 23.
All right, great. Thank you so much. Fantastic. Any other board reports? No? How about audience opportunity to address the board? Is there anyone here to talk to us? We had a full house earlier, but it looks like everyone went to enjoy their summer evening. So, seeing that there's no one here to address us, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, opposed, abstentions. The Wayzata Public Schools regular board meeting for Monday, June 11, 2018, is adjourned. for Monday, June 11th, 2018, is adjourned.